Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, in compliance with NJ SA ten colon four, the Open Public Meetings Act, notice that this duly and regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Township Board of Adjustment has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
Do we have one announcement at all before the roll call? Okay, let's do a roll call. Thank you, please.
Mr. Buck?
Here.
Ms. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Hurley?
Here.
Ms. Bradley?
Here.
Mrs. Smalltop is absent. Ms. O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Costanzo?
Here.
And Mr. Najarian?
Here. I think we have one announcement on number three.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it's actually two and three, since you've given me the floor. So, application number two, Cannonline Holdings LLC, that's a, excuse me, a request for reconsideration of a denial. That matter has been carried to the August three, two thousand twenty-two meeting. The applicants will know this. The applicants will know this. However, that matter has been carried. Regarding application number three, Duben Contracting LLC, excuse me, variance number three, three, nine, four, our new member, Samara O'Neil, has certified and attested that she has prepared the vote or hear the matter, as she has watched the appropriate hearing.
Okay, great. So, let's look at the approval for minutes. We have minutes that you could do?
We have regular and executive minutes of May fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Eligible to vote are Ms. Bradley, Ms. O'Neil, Mr. Costanzo, and Ms. Najarian.
Can I have a motion in a second on these minutes, please?
Make motion to a few minutes.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
And Ms. Najarian?
Yes. Any other minutes?
That concludes the minutes.
Okay. I got two vouchers here in front of me with today's date, May eighteen, twenty-two, and one is for one hundred and fifty, the secretary, and for King Recording, they're both going to King Recording, two fifty, two hundred and fifty dollars. So, I need a motion and a second on the two bills.
Move to pay the vouchers.
A motion and a second. I need a roll call, please.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yeah.
Ms. Bradley?
Yeah.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
And Ms. Najarian?
Yes. Okay, so then we're gonna go all the way down the bottom here before the applications are like swearing.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank each of you for raising your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Starting with Mr.?
Evan Hill, Board Engineer.
Ernie Peters, Board Planner.
Jeffrey Ruporo, Zoning Officer.
Thank you. Okay, so we're up to our first application. All right, and this is variance thirty-four oh eight. Christina? Come on up. And Ken. Are you Ken?
Yes.
Okay, come on up, Ken.
Here. Yes, sir, just make sure we can hear you from the mic. Thank you, sir, also for raising your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Yes.
Tell us a little bit like what you'd like to do, Ken.
Well, I've recently moved from New York to Jackson. Too hard with drive.
Can you bring the microphone closer? Just bring the microphone closer to your mouth.
Okay, yeah. So, when we moved into the property, there was no backyard fence. We wanted to erect the fence, so we contacted Carl's fencing, and they came out and they gave us an estimate, and they said that they would apply for the permits to get the fence erected. They told us that they will take care of everything. I mean, they said they got the permits, and they erected the fence, and then we got a notice saying that there wasn't the variance. We didn't get the approval from the zoning department to erect the fence.
So, you already got it established. It's already up.
Yeah.
The fence is up.
Yeah.
Is that a picture of where the fence is located right now, that brown area?
Correct.
Okay, Evan?
Yep. So, the applicant's here because the fence was installed along Woodbury Drive forward of the side of the house. Therefore, it's within the front yard. The plan indicates that the fence is twenty-four feet. It extends twenty-four feet into the side, into the front yard along Woodbury, which should be forty-five point nine feet from the property line. It's, I'm told, it's a five-foot-high, open Jareth-style fence.
Correct.
Okay. There are no line-of-sight issues, and again, it's just about, it's forty-five point nine feet from the right-of-way, or from the property line.
So, you're happy with everything the way it's done?
There are no, there's no issues from my perspective, yes.
Any board members have questions on this?
I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I'm just, it's twenty-four feet. I'm trying, south, it extends twenty-four feet.
Towards Woodbury Drive.
Oh, okay. If it had been on, I see where the orange is, right, where the orange line is. I'm just trying to understand this myself, and it appears it's, I'm gonna make this up, five feet into the, into where it connects. If it had been on that line, then they would need a variance?
No, they need the variance because it, because it's a corner lot. Anything forward of the house is considered the front yard. So, it's not the setback line that you, that you look at in these cases. It's anything forward of the house. If it was a four-foot-high fence, it would be fine. In this case, it's above four feet, but it is open fence.
No questions from board members? I'm gonna open it up to the public. Anybody care to speak for or against this? Not seeing anybody coming forward, I'm going to close public session. So, it's left to us, board members. To erect the fence, everything is fine with the engineer?
Did you have, I may have overlooked you.
No, 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 no. Sorry.
So, it's left up to us. We need a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll say that I went out, I took a look at the fence. It's a very nice fence. It fits within the character of the neighborhood. The fact that he's at four to five feet, I don't see that as, I see it as maybe the minimus impact, and I see absolutely no problem here. He's coming in to take care of an oversight apparently by his fence company. I would move to approve his, his application.
So, you made a motion?
Yes.
All right, we got a motion. We got a motion and a second roll call, please.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
And Ms. Najarian?
Yes, sir, you enjoy your fence, okay?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everybody.
I'll do a number two. So, we got number three. Contracting. Thirty-three ninety-four.
This is Duben, right? We're doing Duben?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of Board Salvatore Alfieri on behalf of the applicant.
If the board recalls, we were here a couple of months ago. This is an isolated, single-family lot. The issue, the only variance we have is that it's insufficient width, otherwise it complies with the zone. The board, there were several issues that the board raised at the last hearing, and we've submitted a revised engineering plan in an effort to address those comments. Glenn Lyons is our engineer who testified at the last hearing, and he's gonna testify again this evening. Glenn, you're still, you're gonna swear again?
Thank you for raising your right hand, Mr. Lyons. You solemnly swear, affirm, testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to represent before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
You've been previously sworn?
Yes, I have been.
Your credentials have been accepted previously, correct?
Yes, they have been.
Okay.
And, Mr. Lyons, you testified at the last hearing, is that correct?
Yes, I did.
And there were concerns specifically relating to drainage, and you submitted revised plans. Can you describe, summarize for the board what the plan revisions were and how they address specifically the drainage?
Yes, I can. There was a comment from, I think it was a neighbor last time, that there's a drainage issue with water flowing through this property. We have revised the plans. There is curb across the front of the property. We added an inlet on the east side of the property between lots, I believe it's four and five, with pipe running down our property, which will be within easement to a discharge just outside of the wetlands line and the environmental line.
In addition, a question was raised about the septic design and whether we can provide that enhanced system that's typically requested.
Yes, the revised plans we submitted show the enhanced system, which is a Fuji system, which has been used before in, in Jackson, and we revised the calculations to include flow from the basement, the two bedrooms in the basement, which are on an ejector pump. They'll be at a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty percent, accounted for a hundred fifty percent of the flow, and then everything will be the Ocean County Health Department standards.
And is there an opportunity in any way to connect to the actual OCUA sewer system?
No, we sent out letters to all the interested parties in, in town, including the Environmental Commission and so forth. We got a letter back from the Jackson MUA saying there is no sewer service in this road, and we got a letter back from OCU, OCUA, basically saying, under no circumstances can anybody connect to the force main that is in the street. Pressures are too high, flows are too much. If you, if you somehow tried to connect to it, it would all flow back into your home.
In terms of wetlands, the applicant has, since the last hearing, has applied to the DEP for a letter of interpretation?
Yes, the paperwork has gone to the DEP for the yellow eye for the little finger of wetlands just behind the property, or sort of on the front.
And then finally, the applicant has agreed that there'll be no improvements in the attic. There was an issue last meeting about the attic and potential use.
Yes, I, it's my understanding that revised architectures were submitted to the board secretary. I did not see them, and I couldn't find them in our file today, but I understand that the architect sent them in, and they do not show a bathroom in the attic, or, and they show a non-aggressed window on the attic, so it can't be a living space.
And then, just to confirm, that the reason we're before this board tonight is simply because we have inadequate lot width. We do meet all the setback requirements.
That's correct.
So, we have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so I recall the conversation on the, what was stated, that the bore holes were hitting water at two feet down. Is that still the issue?
I believe, no, we were, we had enough space between the ground surface and the water table to fit in our septic system. It was two, it was down two feet behind the property closer to the wetlands.
That wasn't clarified at the last meeting. I remember the conversation. All right, Evan, what you were?
So, with respect to your last comment, Mr. Chairman, soil borings were performed on the property, one within the location of the proposed dwelling, which shows that the seasonal high-water table is approximately six feet below grade, but because the property slopes back towards wetlands, a soil borer was also performed outside of the area that they're proposing to develop, which shows a seasonal high-water table of about a foot and a half below grade, or one point seven five feet below grade, but that, with, the applicant is not proposing any improvements within that area. The revised variance plan, from a drainage perspective, they're proposing curbing along Matita Conne Trail along their frontage, which will help keep the water from flowing onto their property. They are installing a, a proposed inlet within the roadway, which will collect that stormwater and convey it via a pipe, underground pipe, to the back of their property. So, that is, that is more, that is preferred. That's, that's the preferred way to manage the stormwater runoff, as opposed to just trying to create vegetative swales that tend to erode under high velocities, and also if they're not maintained correctly. So, this is the preferred approach to manage stormwater runoff. This, with respect to the septic system, that falls with, under the jurisdiction of the Ocean County Health Department. However, this board has asked, and the applicant has agreed, to incorporate an alternative treatment system for this lot, which allows the applicant to, if it's designed properly and in accordance with the architectural plans, it would be for a seven-bedroom home with an ejector pump in the basement. The plan also looks like it was revised to depict four parking spaces within the driveway. RSIS for a five-bedroom dwelling would require three. We've typically wanted, we've typically asked applicants to provide an additional half-space for every bedroom beyond that. So, for a seven-bedroom dwelling, four spaces would be adequate. I'm sorry, a fifth one in the garage as well. I'm sorry, one in the garage, four in the, four in the driveway. Thank you. Revised architectural plans were submitted. They eliminated the bathroom from the sitting area. There don't appear to be any other changes to the plans that were originally submitted. It's five bedrooms on the second floor, two in the basement. In summary, the applicant has submitted revised plans to, in my, in our opinion, consistent with the board's recommendations from the prior hearing, and also they addressed many of the comments in our prior engineering review letter.
Thank you, Evan. Any board members have questions? Go ahead, Ken. I just have really one question. I, I don't recall, I know there's a, there was testimony as a number of bedrooms. I also know we have no local legislation that addresses that kind of an issue, but can you characterize the proposed structure that you're, that's being proposed here? Is it, is it consistent with the character of development in the neighborhood? Is it, is it the same-sized homes that may be in the area? I looked at the areas, so.
No, the area has generally smaller homes.
Yeah.
Single-story. The newer homes that are, that are being built, that, you know, don't, don't need zoning board approval because the lots are the proper size. The newer homes that are being, basically redeveloping the lots that have already been used are, are more of this style, or for a larger family, you know, with the five bedrooms, basements.
Well, can you tell me, I'm sorry for interrupting, but can you tell me if there are any such larger homes in the immediate area?
There is, I think, two already on Matita Conne Trail.
How far away? I mean, a mile away, or three?
No, no, no.
Three hundred feet?
No, between five hundred and a thousand feet.
Similar size?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman? Absolutely.
It sort of dovetails into what Mr. Hurley was getting at, and I don't know if this question is appropriate to you or maybe to Mr. Alfieri, but it seems with some of the sizes of the houses, and these large houses with a lot of bedrooms in them, is presenting a quandary in my mind in terms of what actually is a single-family home. Now, this application is presented as a two-story, single-family dwelling unit. So, I go into the definitions in our, in our, in our code book, and, and maybe this was testified to or not, but I guess the first, the first question that I would have, and maybe it's an engineering question, based upon the engineering configuration of this structure, is it, is it definitely a single-dwelling unit? You know, there's no horizontal wall, there's no vertical wall or horizontal floor, where there's, where there would be access from another, another unit, if you, if you follow my, if you follow my gist. For instance, I'll read, I'll read the definition into the, into the record. So, there's a dwelling unit that's defined as follows, and this is at section two forty-four dash six in the upper right-hand corner. Down below, it's just page two forty-four, column fifteen. A dwelling unit is one or more rooms containing cooking, eating, living, sleeping, and sanitary facilities, or a combination thereof, provided within the dwelling unit, which are entirely separated from any other dwelling unit, which do not require access through another dwelling unit, and which are designed for and occupied and used exclusively by a single family. It's the single-family part of that that's, that's also considered. Is the testimony from the applicant that this is designed for a single family, and you can hold it. That's one, that's one question. Then, it talks about, in the same definition, same, same group of definitions, on two forty-four, there's six. What is a family? And a family is defined as one or more persons occupying a dwelling unit and living together as a single entity or a nonprofit housekeeping unit as distinguished from individuals or groups occupying a hotel, club, fraternity, or sorority house. So, besides those two definitions, there are none others in here that's specifically what a single-family unit is, but from an engineering point of view, I would like to know that, that this is not in violation of the definition of a dwelling unit. That's one. And secondly, is the intended use by, by, by your client going to conform to those definitions, especially as to the concept of a single family and an entity? But that's, those are my questions.
Well, first, I, I know that my client, if this is approved, is building a house for someone. So, and that, that someone has a bunch of kids, but I can't tell you how many kids or what the person's name is. I mean, if you really wanted that testimony, we'd have to bring that buyer to the meeting and let them introduce themselves and explain who's gonna live there, but it's a single-family house. You can't be occupied in any way that's violative of the definition.
So, so, and perhaps, in an attempt to help flush that out, the chairman actually pointed this out to me. I know, for instance, in the, in the basement, those basement rooms are, are denoted as guest bedrooms, which potentially leads to the conclusion as, are they guests of the single family intermittently? Are they gonna be used as an Airbnb or that sort of thing, somewhat quasi-commercially? I, I mean, the point of it is, I, I understand the represent, I understand the representation, and I think, I don't mean to speak for Mr. Buck, but I perceive globally the concern is that you have this separate unit in the basement with two bedrooms, a playroom, snack room, whatever that means, where, and there's nothing precluding you necessarily from either building a Bilco door with the, or with the slope, having a separate entrance into that basement. I forget if there was testimony to that, or, there is a separate entrance. So, the concern of the board would be, following the definitions, and what, how, in fact, the, the architect himself has shown the bedrooms as guest bedrooms. You know, there's a difference between having your grandparents over as guests intermittently or interspersedly, and, or someone else, and I think.
Along, along those lines to the chair, my other question was about the same situation. You have guest bedroom one, guest bedroom two. Why two bathrooms? If this is a family, it's home, or that's a guest bedroom, why are we having two separate bathrooms in the business?
Well, those questions, I'm gonna have to bring the buyer and the architect to the next meeting because I'm not, they're not here, and I can't answer those questions. But you've heard from the, the Orthodox community that they have families that comes from New York. You've probably heard it in virtually every application when these questions are asked, and they have guests for that, but I, maybe they have a different intent, and I can't respond to it. So, we'll have to bring people back and answer those questions.
Attorney?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it's helpful to have this information on file, simply for enforcement issues.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it's helpful to have this information on file simply for enforcement issues. The property is located in R1 zone. Other than single-family residential dwellings, the applicants offered no information to say it's other than a single-family home. They've asked for no relief. So I can get Mr. Alfieri to say it 100 times that it's a single-family dwelling. But given the, the design or the layout of the house, I don't think the board is out of line by saying, listen, some of the things you've got set up in the basement make it look like mother-daughter, two-family, whatever you might call it, simply because of the way it's laid out. I believe they're fair questions to get clarified on the record so that we verify that the application that's before us is for a permitted use in the R1 zone. And if not, notice, come back, give us the proofs, make the application for it.
Should we ask for the app to come in and ask questions?
Well, I think Mr. Alfieri gets to decide how he wants to present his case. And if he wants to bring them back, that's up to him.
I have to bring them because I, I'm not, I'm not going to testify and I can't make representation. So I'll have to bring them back. I, I would, that's fine. And I, I understand. The only thing I'd like to do, if we can, is finish with Mr. Lyons so that we don't have to bring an engineer back if all the engineering issues are addressed, just so we could save expense for the client.
Yeah, we were concerned about that water issue and how he was going to divert it away from the house and into the septic system. So I think we clarified that, right?
Yeah, the, the revised plans substantially incorporate the engineering comments in our February 15th, 2022 letter. And I have no additional comments based on the revisions made to the plans.
Following up on the chairman's global point again, potentially translating slightly. I heard Mr. E, Mr. Hill indicate that this is even a preferred method. I guess if first for Mr. Lyons and then for Mr. Hill, you just talk about the efficacy, if that's the right word, of leading the stormwater from the street back to the wetlands themselves? Like, does it end up in a rain garden to, to filter? How does it filter before it then goes into the ground? And if that's a silly question, you can say that, tell me that also.
Well, we're, we're basically just picking up the water from the street and direct, what used to pass through the property and directing it towards the back of the property where the wetlands are. Now, the rainwater will get filtered in the wetlands. It's a very large undeveloped area in the back.
Let me, I, so let me again, and then I'm the tenth, try to get to where you're, where you're.
Clarify for the board.
And where your point was. I guess the, the potential difference that needs to just be articulated is natural sheet flow over, over the property. That water landing on the ground and sheet flow going through may not have the same level of particles than something carried on the street and then pushed back to the wetlands themselves. So I'm not an engineer, obviously. I don't know how important or lack of important that is. Is there, is there additional, because the water, as I understand it, you're going to have the water in a pipe. It's going to go, sorry for the little sound effect. It's going to go down there and it's going to land somewhere close to where the wetlands are. I mean, it could be your testimony is that the natural wetlands is sufficient filtration of whatever is going to come from the street. Do you need to put additional sand right at the outflow pipe? So it further filters before it gets, or gravel before it gets into the wetlands itself?
That, that's, we are proposing stone at the outfall to help slow down the, you know, and spread out the flow of the water. But, you know, all these wetlands, you know, rain gardens and ponds. We're on a huge rain garden, which is all that open space for the Matitacan River. I don't think, my personal opinion is you're not going to get any better filtering of that water than have it soak into the ground behind the property. And we're not changing it. We're not changing the type of water. We're just picking up the water that used to flow across the property. So we're cutting down the flow by, I think it was 80 feet. So we're just picking it up, moving it over 80 feet back. It still disperses in the exact same place it always did. We're just, because it was an issue raised by one of the resident across the street that he's seen the water flow across the property. Felt it was best we curb it, we pick it up. This way we don't get any erosion on our property or that we wouldn't direct anything over to the neighbor's property. So that's the lot on five. I think this is a very good solution to his concern.
We had a lot of rain this weekend, last weekend. Were you down at the property at all locating, looking at the water table?
Uh, no, I, I wasn't. I wasn't in town last weekend.
Any other questions from board members?
Yes. I did. I spoke about that at the beginning. We, we got a letter back from the Ocean County Utilities Authority, who owns that pipe. There's a pump station on the other side of, I'm sorry, I can't remember the, but the main road that's right at the end of Matitacan Trail. And it pumps over to a trunk line, a very, a 48-inch line over in Lakewood. They said by no means can you ever drill into that pipe to connect anything. And I, and we submitted those letters from OCUA. It is not meant as a collector for individual home pump stations. It's pumping a lot of sewage. And I, we submitted the letter to the OCUA. I'm trying to see if I brought copies of it with me. I don't know who submitted.
We have it. We, the board is.
They definitely said no. Not from, I, not from an engineering issue. I don't know if it's a building code requirement or anything like that. So. Yes. But I believe. We'll discuss that with the applicant between now and the next time we come back.
Good buddy. Here's James.
I'd just like to renew my, my concern here. The engineering problems, obviously, we leave to our, to our experts here. Apparently that has been addressed and is being addressed. My main concern here is the burden of proof required by the applicant. I understand that the only variance that's requested here is a lot width. And I know the lot exists as a lot width. But we, we are allowed to take into consideration aspects in the negative side, the negative criteria as to the impact on the community. And I drove in that community and I, you know, I, I looked at the houses and the proposed house here is out of whack with the size of the houses that are in that general area. Now, I understand your engineer has testified and indicated that there are other larger, larger homes in the area. But I'm also looking at, at, at the maps that have been provided. And there are also larger lots in the area that are over two acres. And the problem that you have, I'm sorry. The problem that you have is you can have a lot that conforms except for a lot width and build a house that is totally out of, out of the nature of that community. And then I have to look at what is going to be the impact on that community. And there could be a number of issues involving that. It could be a value issue. It could be aesthetic issue. I understand that we're looking at a C variance here. Looking at the C variance from the negative criteria, we, as I've said, you have to look at the impact on that community. And without knowing more, it seems to me that having a house of that size outside the, the, the character of the development of the area has, will have an overall general negative impact. Why am I saying that? I don't know because I haven't had any testimony from, from, from the applicant's side here whether or not there is a negative impact. All I'm hearing is drainage, water. We heard neighbors talk about that issue. I'm hearing that. But I'm just concerned. I guess my concern is, maybe Mr. Alfieri can take this back to his client. Would he be considering downsizing the house? It doesn't have to be the size of the communities, you know, the, the character of the neighborhood. But it can be close. This is, this is way out of whack. And that's my concern. And quite frankly, unless that's addressed to my satisfaction right now, I'm not satisfied that the applicant meant it's a burden on the negative criteria as it stands right now.
Thank you, James. Paul, you have, anybody else? Have board members? All right, anybody in the audience? This is, come on up.
Prior to you testifying, may I ask Mr. Alfieri, is it, have you already made the attempt that you are going to in fact ask the matter to be carried?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Appreciate that. May I come up? So let me first, before I even have you sworn firm your testimony. The reason I ask that question is that the purpose, at this point, the purpose of your questions, the applicant has indicated that the applicant's going to come back again based on the issues already raised. So you should limit your questions now to what you've already heard here. For, for instance, I'm sure that they're going to bring their architect back.
I'll do my best.
Thank you. So if you could kindly raise your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm that the information, questions, comments, or testimony you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your address, please?
My name is Amy Howells, last name H-O-W-E-L-L-S. I'm the wife of Tim Howells. He testified last time. I was out of town. I wasn't able to come. And I prepared a statement and I actually called to see if I could have it read, but they said no. So I have my statement. I've made some notes based on a lot of the changes. I know there's been several plans submitted and several changes. So I'll do my best here. I am a active community member. My kids go here. They go to Jackson Schools. You know, I volunteer at the school. I'm a Girl Scout troop leader. So this is a place that we have created a home for our children. My husband's a lifelong resident. I moved here in 2007 when we decided to have a family here. We decided we want to live in his childhood home and the neighborhood because we liked, we liked the almost rural-like atmosphere of our street. It's not a development. It's not a bunch of cookie cutter houses. They're smaller homes. So I am here to testify because I'm very concerned about the house that is being proposed to be put there. The house is on our street. There are by-levels and ranches. I happen to have a ranch. I'm in lot five. I'm in the lot next door. Most of the houses on our street, I'm going to say, are probably about 1,400 to 2,000 square feet. Maybe there's a house there on the road that's 3,000, but these are not large homes at all. And I have a lot of concerns with a, you know, 6,600-plus square foot house, including the basement, I guess, and even more with the attic, being put right next door. It's a very, very large home and obviously it's, we're here for our variance because the lot's not wide enough for it. I walk up and down my street every day with my dog and there are no giant houses. If you go into the next town over, because at the end of our street is a new town, there are new large houses being built there and they look really ridiculous on top of smaller ranch homes. This is a place where I want to be able to raise my kids and have them finish out school. And I'm afraid of what our street, because in our neighborhood, it's not a development. It's just, just a street. So that's one of my concerns is that that the house is extremely large for the neighborhood. I also have concerns how that's going to impact our property, our neighborhood, and our quality of life. In reference to the drainage, so I had a lot of concerns regarding the septic tank that was being put in. It was a very large septic tank with a very large field and it's basically right in line with my well. So that brings up concerns of the drinking water that I drink, that my children drank every day. I know that some of the concerns were addressed with drainage because that was also one of my concerns was that the, looked like the lot was going to be raised. And what's that going to do when it disrupts, you know, 80, 90 years' worth of storm patterns, storm drainage patterns? These homes are built in the 30s, some of them. So I, it's been a long-established drain pattern. So we're going to go in and disrupt everything. What's that going to do to my property, being that the house is so large and so close to my, my own house? How's that going to affect my foundation? How about, is that going to affect the yard that my children play in every day? How is that going to affect my well and my drinking water? In reference to the new drainage pipe that is being proposed, I have concerns about that as well. It's, it's going to be in between my property and, and their property. I do believe the owner of this property, lot four, also owns lot three. So I don't know if it can be put on the other side. Why does it have to be put really close to my well, where my drinking water comes from? And now we're talking about a lot of concentrated, concentrated street drainage now with a curb and all this stuff coming through. So how is that going to affect my well, my drinking water, my foundation, my yard? All of those things, I'm considering those. I am not opposed to a, a house being built. Trust me. I don't like looking at an abandoned house with foot-and-a-half-tall grass and trash all in front of it. That's not something I want to look at. It's not something I want my children to have to live next door to. We would love to see a nice home put there, but a home that fits within the neighborhood, a home that's for a single family. Again, concerned with the amount of bedrooms that are there. I also too have concerns that, is it really a single-family home? I just wanted to blend. I want to, you know, preserve our own house and our own property so that we can continue to live here and be members of Jackson. So that's all I, I think I have at this time.
Through the chair, may I ask a question? Do you know the scrap footage of your home?
I want to say it's 1,800 square feet.
Thank you.
Are there open wetlands in the back of your property as well?
Yes. Sorry. I was going to say yeah, but I want to make sure. He's the, he's the wetland expert. But yes, we have, we have a large backyard that the kids play in and then behind our, our property goes right back to the river. So there's a whole section of property that we don't use. That's just the, the wetland area that goes right to the, the riverbed.
You made a lot of good points and I think they're absorbing a lot of those issues. Okay. So thank you for coming forward.
Thank you.
Is your husband going to come up?
I believe so, yes.
Doug, can't.
Come on up.
Helping her was fine, but you got to come be sworn.
We're switching.
You raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm testimony, information, questions, or comments? You're about to be sent before the board, will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Can you kindly give us your full names, spell your last, and your address, please?
Timothy Howells, last name H-O-W-E-L-L-S. I live at 277 Matitacan Trail, Jackson, New Jersey.
Just the acoustics in the room. Just bring that microphone right up there. Good.
Better?
Good.
Okay, uh, really, I just have one thing this time. So again, a lot of paper, just going to talk about one thing. It's more maybe a question about what I see on the, what I see on the plans and how it relates to the conservation zone overlay and the zoning laws here in Jackson. So when I go on the website and I look, it tells me that in conservation zone overlay 24445, it talks about the letter of interpretation that we did, we did receive the note this time that you guys did apply. So we do, we do hope that we'll see a letter eventually. But this really refers to one section in there. And it says specifically in section C of 24445, it says all wetlands as identified and verified pursuant to that letter required before any application can be deemed complete as stated in section C1A above shall be excluded from the gross acreage for the purposes of calculating residential density and calculating maximum lot coverage. Okay. I asked because on his plans, on the left-hand side, I don't know if you want to call it a syllabus or exactly what it is, but it talks about how many actual square footage he has and what he's required to have. We won't know until we get that letter how that changes. So because of the size of the house and he's really close to the total already, I want to make sure that we have the letter before we actually get the right calculation there. That's it. That's it. Thank you.
Anybody else coming up?
Sir, thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full names, spell your last, and your address?
Anthony Vezzella, V is in Victor, E R Z E L L A.
I recognize you. You were here before. Do you have things additional that you want to comment on?
Excuse me?
You were here last time.
Yes.
You have additional?
Yes.
Information?
Yes. I was not able to get this before I left. It wasn't up, so I can't speak to it too much, but somebody asked about the water outflow from the pipes. General construction, when you put water into a pipe, it can only be discharged into a retention pond, a retention area. It cannot be just discharged and let run out. So I don't know if that's on there or not.
I'm sorry, so I'm going to have to respectfully disagree with that. There's nothing in the state regulations that require that you, what you're referring to are stormwater piping throughout a development that collects runoff to manage it in a basin so that the release of that runoff is less than the runoff as if it were not developed. So that's the purpose of a basin. There's no state regulation that says a pipe has to discharge to a stormwater basin. That's just not correct. So what the applicant has done here is, there are regulations that require discharge from a pipe, the velocity of that discharge to be regulated. And the, the applicant has included a riprap apron, which is consistent with the regulations, to, to reduce the velocity of the water coming out of that pipe. Okay?
Yeah, I said I wasn't able to get this before I left.
Okay, understood.
I just got back at six. All right, number two is already taken care of. Number three, I'm concerned if we have a lot of high-density occupancy houses built on that street. We're not actually a street. We're a lane, according to the county. It's not full width. And we have a problem with the buses. When it's school time, it's a zoo out there, and they go way too fast. The traffic, if you're going to put a lot of high-density houses, can you look at something to make the street wider? Put a sidewalk in or something? Because if you just put a bunch of houses with a lot of people in there, it's not going to be really safe. That goes along with, you know, quality of life. That's all I've got.
They're putting curbs in, that's what we heard, right?
No, I'm talking about this, the width of the road is not full two-lane width. It's, it's classified as a lane. It's very narrow. Literally, two full-size trucks just can barely pass. And if someone, a large truck, they park on both sides, you can't get it, the fire truck can't get down that road if there's cars on both sides.
Oh, we are widening the road to 16 feet from the center line, I believe, in front of our property, which is what you would normally get with a, actually, it's a little more than you normally get because the Residential Site Improvement Standard only calls for 28 feet. We're providing a road that would be 32 feet. You'll get that as this road redevelops. People will build, as you get every application that goes down the road, you get everybody to widen their little piece. The only other way to get the whole road widened is the township would have to go out and put out a contract, rebuild the road. We originally had sidewalks on our plan. We, I, we took them off, and I don't remember why. We could put them back on. It may have been one of the comments in the letters, I don't have that in front of me right now. Wasn't ready to go back and go through a couple of things. But we have no problem putting in sidewalks. We, we are widening our piece of the road. As far as this, the stormwater, we put the pipe at the low spot. If we put it on the other side of our property, we're going to end up with a puddle where I put the inlet. The road grades to where I put the inlet in, so I'm picking it up at the lowest point in front of our property. Other than that, we, oh, the well, if the well that they're concerned about, we are within the requirements of the Health Department and the state's septic code. We are far enough away from their well that we will not impact their well at all. As far as the runoff, it's the same thing. That water's in the street. That water's soaking into the ground now. We're going to pick that water up and get it further away from her well before it discharges.
Okay. You brought up good points. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You had your chance.
And, and they'll be back.
Yeah. They're going to bring the client back.
Sir, sir, now you're out of order.
Sorry. Come back. They're going to have the client come in front of us. Any board members have any questions? Ernie, you have anything?
No, sir.
Yeah, James.
For, for Mr. Hill, I guess. Is a basement going to be a problem here, considering the proximity of the wetlands?
So the building, the township code and the building code requires that the basement floor elevation be a minimum of two foot above the seasonal high water table. A test boring was performed within the footprint of the home, and they've established the basement floor elevation at 94. The seasonal high water table is at 91.8, so they meet that threshold. They meet that two-foot separation requirement. It's a two-foot separation distance minimum required. There's not a, that's, that's what, that's what's required. So from a, from an engineering perspective, it meets, it meets code.
Okay. Okay, you want to? Yeah, we don't have any.
Bring people back.
Jeff, who we have?
June 1st is terrible.
Yeah, I'm thinking to be safe, June 15th, to be really safe.
Well, the only, the only thing is they've been, and, and I would say this, they've been carried twice. It's a very narrow issue. So I, I think on the totality, the circumstances, carrying it to the June 15th meeting and hearing it first is probably the proper thing to do.
I just have to, that's fine. You just have to make sure, we may, we may have to bring a planner if we're not, we have a lot of experts we may have to bring if we're going to push this thing to the limit. So I got to make sure everyone's available, but for the purposes of tonight, June 15th is fine. And if I, if we have an issue getting people together, I'll let you know right away.
So, so this is what we'll announce. Ladies and gentlemen, application, application number three, Juven Contracting, Variance 3394, will be carried to the June 15, 2022 meeting without the requirement of further notice. The applicant has waived time through June 30, 2022. And I'm just going to forewarn the applicant that if it's carried again, you'll have to re-
We'll renotice, that's fine.
Thank you.
For clarification, is the engineer going to be back here or?
That's what I was going to ask, that if the board-
I think the public still has some-
All right, questions possibly. Are you available, Glenn, June 15th? Let's just make sure. We'll bring him back because they may, you're right, there may be another question, and then we'll have to put it off again, and it'll never end.
That was your son that was here last time, right?
Yes.
You couldn't make it.
Yes. He's in somewhere tonight, a different town. Okay, so 15th, thank you.
So you'll have a tan? Very good. Thank you. All right, so we're up to the next application.
Again, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's Albert R. Alfieri on behalf of the applicant. This is a first public hearing on this application, and we actually had the client here so he could answer the questions that the board raised in the last application, and we could get through the intended use. Could either stand here or use, or use that. Or use that. Yeah, you could say, after he gets, after he gets affirmed.
Right, no, no introduction, that, other than that, we're ready?
All right. We're ready.
Thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to represent before the board shall, shall represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you kindly give us your full names, spell your last, and your address, please?
Aaron Michael Rosenberg, A H A R O N, Michael, R O S E N B E R G, 6 Denmark Lane, Jackson.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenberg, you are one of the owners of this property, is that correct?
Yes.
And do you currently reside at the house?
Yes.
Your original plan and application was to demolish the house and build a new home, is that correct?
Yes.
And what happened since then to get you to the point where you're now intending to simply do an addition?
Oh, it's a good question. Long answer, but short of it is number of considerations, but we just felt unnecessary.
Okay. So can you describe for the board what you're proposing in terms of the addition? What the intended use is in terms of the number of bedrooms? Who, who's going to occupy the house?
We've got a wife, my wife and six, occupants of the house are my wife and six kids. My kids are getting older. We have two bathrooms upstairs, and adding a bathroom is the most important pressing matter, but the size of it, hosting guests make it very challenging. We love having our family as open as possible. As our kids are getting older, want to give them separate rooms for those that qualify, and simply put, update the house and make it more comfortable.
So, so the, the plan as proposed now, we'll have six bedrooms on the second floor, is that correct?
Yes.
And then the basement, you're going to potentially expand the size of the basement?
Yes.
You currently have a basement?
Yes.
And how many bedrooms are you proposing in the basement if you expand the basement?
Three.
And what would the purpose of those three bedrooms be?
Guest rooms.
And what's a guest room mean in your, in your life? Is it going to be an Airbnb?
No.
Are you going to rent out the basement?
No.
So who, who would be the guests?
Hopefully, family, if they still want to come visit us.
Right, and, and you may have additional children, too.
Well, get back to that when that happens.
Now, there's another question regarding, there's a, the pool and a fence. Can you describe for the board what type of fence you have and how high that fence is?
I think now we have the minimum size fence that, that's required by law, but we're looking to put in a newer, what it's called, aluminum or-
Jar- jarath?
Yeah, I just forgot the name of it, a six-foot tall fence around the pool.
And also, the house that you're, do you have a garage with your house now? How many cars?
You can fit two if you want.
And the new addition, if, if we're approved, will also be two-car garage? And then how, how long is your driveway approximately?
How long would you say, 75 feet? I don't know. Something like that.
So you have, well, the engineer will talk about that. The other question was, if you've agreed that if the septic system has to be upgraded and/or replaced for this addition, you would obtain whatever approvals are necessary? And I think that's really all I have of Mr. Rosen. We have an engineer here, so you have any other questions of the applicant?
Mr. Rosenberg, I'm going to show my ignorance here, but in, as you were answering one of Mr. Alfieri's questions, I think in relation to use of a bedroom or bathroom, you said to those that qualify, you used the word "qualify." Would you explain what that means? Because I don't understand what you mean by that.
With pleasure, an attempt at humor, nothing more.
Meaning if they're old enough to have their own bedroom, is that, or?
Age.
Or behaved.
The kids have been begging, can I have my own bedroom? And we haven't determined who's getting their own bedroom, that's all. With six bedrooms upstairs, they don't each get one, so some will be sharing. Forgive me for being unclear. What, what's the question? Yes. That's fine. I'm not, I'm not understanding the question.
We could, we, the architect's here, he, he, he put the, he could explain, it's really a placeholder, it's not intended.
I can try to explain it, but we're not going to make one bedroom, one, one bed, size bedrooms. Kids are going to get older, get married, hopefully come visit, and when they do, have room for them and their spouses and children. So we're looking, we're not looking to leave anytime soon.
Any other board members have a question?
Okay.
Bring on the engineer.
Sir, thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full names, spell your last, your affiliation, then to the board's recommendation, your credentials, please?
Charles Surmont, S U R M O N T E, Licensed Engineer and Land Surveyor, retained by the applicant to perform both those, both those exercises in regard to this application. My office address is 301 Main Street in Allenhurst. I've been licensed as a engineer and surveyor for 30 years now. Haven't been here very frequently, probably eight or 10 years ago was my last, last trip out, out to this board.
All right, this board accepts your credentials. Continue with your presentation.
And, and Mr. Surmont, you prepared the variance plan that's been submitted in support of the application, is that correct?
I did, yes.
And on the variance plan, can, can, on the variance plan, it identifies the existing conditions and the proposed, the proposed addition, and then the variances that would result from the, the proposed addition?
Yeah, I'll try to be brief on that. The lot itself is, is undersized as to area and depth and width as it relates to the R3 zone requirement. So we have a, we have a one-acre lot where 130,000 square feet is required. The lot has 137 feet of width where 200 feet is required, and the lot is 320 feet deep where 400 feet is required. So those are existing conditions that aren't going to change by the application. There's a couple other existing conditions that are, are non-compliant. That would be the setback to the front porch, which is presently 59 feet even where 80 feet is required. Side yard setback, 50 feet is required. Both sides are, are short, 33.9 feet on the left and 37 feet on the right. And the other existing condition variance would be the location of the swimming pool. There's a 50-foot side yard requirement for the swimming pool, and that pool presently exists at 27 and a half feet. As to the proposal, we're essentially, we're essentially working within the existing width of the building. We are expanding out to the rear on the left side, out a little bit to the rear on the right side, and we're proposing a covered porch that's a little, that will come out a little bit further than the existing porch. The existing porch is pretty small, and we're proposing to, to, to take that covered porch all the way across the front of the building to a width of about 44 feet. And in doing so, we're proposing to make it a little bit deeper, about a foot and a half deeper, so that- half deeper, so that the setback to the porch is proposed at 57.6 feet as opposed to the 59 feet that presently exists. The other main addition would be the garage and the bedrooms above it off the existing back-left corner. We're looking to maintain that same setback that presently exists now of 33.9 feet, not getting any closer to the side yard. The other improvements we've proposed is obviously, the existing driveway, by the way, is about 75, 80 feet long. We're proposing to extend the driveway back about 30 or 35 feet to serve the side entry garage in the rear. So we'll have two cars in the garage and easily, easily another six parking spaces in the back half of the driveway, where the driveway is about 16 feet wide, and then there'll be, then there'll be a narrower driveway of about 50 feet in depth off to the front, so beyond 50 feet from the street, we'll have, we'll have room for the parking of aid vehicles. If a, if a new septic system is deemed required, we're proposing to put it, propose it in the backyard as indicated on the plan.
And the applicant would obtain any tree removal permits that are required? It doesn't look like there'll be much, but if there, if a permit's required, the applicant would obtain that, is that correct?
Yeah, only as necessary to build the system and grade it appropriately, but yes, of course, would obtain any necessary tree removal permits.
And then we just need guidance, actually, from the board professionals and the board as to sidewalk curbing and the need for shea treatments in the front. The applicant will either install the sidewalk and the curbing along the frontage and/or pay to the fund in lieu, whatever the board's pleasure is, we would do. And then I know that Ernie mentions a six-foot wide shea tree utilities is required, and if the board requires that, we could obviously do that as well. And that concludes the testimony of Mr. Surmont.
So I'm talking off comments that were in our February 15, 2022 letter. The plans have been revised since then, so some of those comments have been incorporated into the, into the revised plans, others still remain outstanding. Mr. Surmont, just for clarification, nine, nine bedrooms are proposed?
Six on the second floor, three in the basement.
Nine bedrooms total. Are there any, are there any bathrooms proposed in the basement?
Two bathrooms, yes.
But there are bathrooms, so it's going to require an ejector pump?
Yes, it will.
So this, this property will require a new septic system, purely based on the expansion.
Absolutely.
Historically, this board on lots of, under two acres or so, and for larger homes have required or requested an alternative treatment unit system be, be designed and permitted, just so you know that, that's more than likely going to be in the resolution for approval.
Okay.
That's acceptable.
Okay. I have one other comment. Oh, the, the, the proposed expanded dwelling is going to incorporate roof drains, so the runoff from the roof is going to be collected and conveyed to an infiltration trench or recharge area located in the front yard. The proposed septic system appears to, the location of it appears to be consistent with the regulations as far as providing adequate separation distance between the existing well, and we would just need confirmation that, obviously, the county would require confirmation that it's from any adjacent wells also. I think that's it, that's all I have. With respect to the curbing and sidewalk, I don't believe there's currently sidewalk and curbing on the lots adjacent to this. We do have a comment in here indicating that if it's, if the board is inclined to grant their waiver for constructing curbing and sidewalk along this frontage, then they would contribute to the pedestrian safety fund in lieu of.
Yeah, I've got to ask, Evan, this pedestrian safety fund, do you know anything about it? I mean, can you tell me about it? Where does the money go? Is it ever used? I mean, it may be out of your bailiwick, but since you raised it, I may.
That is, it's my understanding, I don't, I don't participate in where those funds get distributed, I'm not in those conversations. It's my understanding that those funds are used to make repairs and to construct pedestrian safety, curbing, sidewalk, things along those lines throughout the town at the discretion of somebody, but not this board.
All right. Ernie, do you have anything at this juncture?
Nothing to add there, just the comments are okay.
And you're happy?
Most of the time.
Through the chair, is there any proposals to have an egress out of the basement?
Well, there is, there is an existing basement, and we'll be expanding that basement, too. Oh, I'm sorry.
So it's a walkout basement, it's an English basement?
Just to the pool, right adjacent to the pool, you want to be able to go in there, have the bathroom, easy access to the bathroom.
But it's, it's going to be a rear sliding door.
James?
Just a question that I had, first application, I think I'll wait, you're going to have a planner testify?
You know, we've, we haven't brought, Mr. Surmont's not a planner, we found that out recently, so if you, if you need planning testimony, we have to come back with a planner.
Someone can answer my question again. Now, I'm looking at the existing conditions and the proposed conditions, and of course, it's an existing structure, an existing lot, but you have an undersized lot area, you have undersized, non-conforming with a lot width, but yet, on the building area, you're doubling the, the building area. How does that, is that consistent in size with the adjoining homeowners? I didn't say adjoining homeowners, with, with the general community?
Well, just to clarify, we're adding about 1,000 square feet to a 2,000-square-foot building, so we're, we're increasing it by 50%. I wouldn't say we're doubling it, but.
Well, I'm sorry, the doubling was the prior application, we were going to build a new building, so it's up, it's up by 50%. My question still stands. Do you know if it is, do you have any specific knowledge, whether the sizes of the, the homes in the area, is it consistent, is it inconsistent?
Our architect is probably better, he knows that area better, I don't think Chet has.
Well, I did, you know, I reviewed, I reviewed some aerials today. There are homes, either side of us, that are, are either recently expanded or recently constructed, that are, that are larger than the footprint that we're proposing. I do have a copy of an aerial if you'd like me to.
Well, and Mr. Flickman can answer you with real.
Well, I did drive the area, and I did look at the, the sizes of the homes in the area, which I always do, just for consistency, and it looked as if there were homes that were somewhat smaller. There are homes that are based on what's proposed now, similar in size.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Call anything at this juncture.
Just that I would agree with the observations made by Mr. Hurley. I drive the area as well, and I would agree with those observations.
Any other board members have issues?
Come on. We're going to bring, just to give you a specific response to your question, Judge.
Sir, thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm, testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board, represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, your affiliation, and to the board to request your qualifications?
My name's Samuel Flickman, last name F-L-I-G-M-A-N, licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, been practicing in New Jersey for the last three plus years. Besides being the architect of record for this home, I'm also actually a neighbor living across the street at 5 Denmark Lane, so I can answer specifically the board member's question with regards to the neighborhood.
And you, you prepared the plans that are before the board tonight, too?
Yes.
So if they have architectural questions, you could respond to all of them?
Absolutely.
And before you answer that question, can you just describe that, since we are increasing the?
You've gone ahead a little too.
I haven't accepted your credentials, so continue with your education.
Yes, I graduated from New Jersey, New Jersey State Technology School of Architecture, licensed in New York and New Jersey.
This board accepts your credentials, continue.
I wanted to just discuss, although it's a very slight increase in the variance for the front porch, I just wanted you to describe for the board what the front porch feature is and why it's being proposed, because it does require variance relief.
Absolutely. So the idea with, with just making the, the front porch was that currently the house runs, it's just, there's a two-story portion, and then to the left of that, there's a one-story, there's a one-story garage portion, and being that we're extending and we're building above that garage, we didn't want to look like a plain box that was really running straight, so we kind of gave it some character by bumping out the front porch, plus the client really enjoys sitting outside and kind of wanted to give him that opportunity to sit outside in that front porch.
Okay, and then in terms of the size of the homes in relation to this home after an addition were added?
Right, so actually, we kind of pivoted the previous application that we followed us for a new home, and we pivoted to doing an extension in addition to the existing home, and so I would definitely say that the house is within the character of the houses on the block. I lived there myself. We're obviously adding some square footage, as you said, around 1,000 square feet. The home is getting small for the homeowner, definitely likes living in this area, as many of us do, and wants to stay here and just have it extended so he can continue living here. In fact, the neighboring house to this one, to the left of this house, is completing a new 6,000-square-foot home, which actually went for variance in front of the board, which got approval also because it was a smaller lot. This house is definitely much smaller than that. Continuing down the street towards the end of the block, there is two large houses. Obviously, those houses are, are larger lots, they're not one acres, they're like two acres, but also those houses, I'd say, are five and a half, 6,000 easy each one of those homes. So this house, this application specifically, being that we didn't go for a new variance of a new house, and we kept it within the character of the existing house and just added square footage by the back of it, I think definitely stays within the character of the new house, with, within the mix of the neighborhood.
Thank you.
I didn't see a picture of what the house is going to look like on the outside. You didn't submit anything?
I believe we submitted a front elevation.
And I think that's a good opportunity. I think, I believe some of us only received a copy of the second-floor plan and not the complete set. And I don't have, yeah, because I don't have a basement plan or a first-floor plan or an elevation plan. So what I'm going to suggest is, as a condition of moving forward, whether resolution compliance, a complete set of architectural plans be provided. And I understand why you didn't put a revision date on it, because it's a brand-new set of drawings as opposed to revising the, what you did before, maybe update, update the date on them, to be, you know what I mean?
Absolutely.
Are you going to send, bring back a planner?
You know, it's, again, it's up to the board. We, I know what the law says, and I'm not, this isn't my first rodeo, we're trying to save money for some of the homeowners, but if the board feels planning testimony is essential, we'll have to bring a planner back.
James, what's your feeling?
Well, I don't, I don't know that we need a planner. I guess my question is, and I don't, I don't even know if the architect can answer the question, but there are pre-existing conditions here that are non-compliant, correct?
Yes.
What is proposed, if, what you're proposing, does that increase any of those non-compliant conditions?
The, you know, some of you, I forgot what zone it is, but you do have a residential zone or more that state that as long as you don't exacerbate, as long as you don't go further on either side, then you don't need a variance, but in this zone, it's unusual in that that exception's not there, so even though we're holding the side yard, it does require variance because that exception in your order, and Jeff would probably be able to speak better to it, but you do have zones that would say this would not be a variance.
I think the porch planner has some comments.
Oh, sorry.
The front yard setback for the covered porch is a foot and a half further forward in the house, so they're taking, the existing front yard setback requirement is 80 feet. Currently, the house is 59 feet, which would be non-conforming, and they're proposing 57.6 feet. So as Mr. Surmont indicated, they're moving the porch out a foot and a half, to the extent that they need enough, they've exacerbated the existing condition by moving the porch forward.
But we also have side yard setback variances that are triggered.
Existing side yard setback variances, the one on the left isn't changing, the one on the right might be changing by a tenth of a foot, can't tell. Certainly, the front yard setback for the house, the setback relief has been increased.
So to the naked, I'm sorry, to the naked eye, other than the front yard setback, the two sides, the line is remaining the same.
They're holding the side yards.
Obviously, you're proposing an expansion of the house itself.
Correct, but no closer to either side.
All right, so Evan brought up a question in regards to what the basement is going to look like, right? You asked that question.
You know, I just, I don't have the plan, do you, I'm sure we have exhibits that, were they submitted electronically? That's all we have?
Yeah, I emailed plans to Dawn, and then we had them picked up and delivered, but I'm not sure with the architectures. I know we had the engineering plans delivered.
Yeah. All right, if the board members have them, that's fine. If the board members have a complete set.
I don't see the basement. I don't see.
You have the basement? It has everything.
We got connections.
It's probably old. It's probably going to use a new application. Probably from a new house, probably from a new house.
Nobody got it. No.
This also is a recent stamp, so she's, this is original.
This is the original?
Yeah.
You got the original?
Yeah, I think you have the original house that was going to be the new house, not the, not the addition. Yeah, I'm not sure if, can you, can you describe what the basement has?
Yeah, for the board members, so just, just to understand, originally, this was being designed as a new home, we kind of pivoted real quickly, just so we can keep the meeting, and we did real quickly an extension addition type of, type of plan. Now, just with regards to the basement, there is an existing finished basement, and we very quickly proposed, just in the newest portion, that would be, that's being added on the left side, some additional bedrooms. As we discussed initially during the testimony, there would be three bedrooms there.
Three bedrooms and two bathrooms, I think you said, are correct.
And what else?
There's a playroom, a mechanical room, and, and the client would like, and the client would like as well, that, to incorporate a slider door from the back to the, to the pool.
So it's a walkout basement?
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to really design that a little bit better, because although it does gray down the back, we just have to figure that out to make sure that works.
I think it's a disadvantage by the board members not being able to evaluate this.
So, yeah, I would say this, you can, my recommendation, knowing generally what the board likes to see, and quite frankly, the legal right that the board has to have a full understanding of the architecturals and the integration of those architecturals and how they're going to work on the site, is that they, they ought to be submitted. Whether or not you also need to bring a planner is, that, I would leave that to you. The other respectful request, Mr. Alfieri is generally aware, but Mr. Surmont, he's not been here in a while, and yourself as well, just so what the, what we like to see is an entire PDF submitted, I mean, of all the submissions, but if you could make believe we're, I hate to say it this way, one good thing that came out of the COVID process, right, is the applicants had to get their exhibits, had to pre-mark them, had to submit them, and thereafter, right, provided basically power, the printed PowerPoint to pass out to the board, to make it easier so that the board doesn't have to fumble through even the larger plans as you're, as you're putting them on the screen. That's the respectful recommendation, you know, as well. Ultimately, that's the board's determination, but again, you're looking for some consistency, and that's the type of things that the board just likes to see, so the board. So, so the board understands how that property is going to work on that lot.
Right, and the revised engineering has been submitted, so it's just the, the sheets of the architectural that have not.
I just, we asked for that a little extra piece as well, but that's.
Paul, anything?
Uh, no, I don't know if it helps, Mr. Out the area, Mr. Flickman, but what Mr. Gertner just placed on the record is absolutely correct. At, at least from my point of view, and I suspect it's true of the other board members, when we have that information, it makes the digesting of the material a whole lot easier and, and truly helps formulate, um, uh, questions and to crystallize issues and ultimately cut to the chase. So, uh, I would, I would echo, uh, what Mr. Gertner just placed on the record.
Thank you, Paul.
Anybody else have any questions, James, anything, anybody? All right, so, uh, I want to open it up to the public, not seeing anybody coming forward, I'm closing public session. And you're looking for another date?
Yeah, I just asked the architect how long it would take to get those plans together. He says they're pretty much ready, so we can submit them quickly and then it's whenever we can get on an agenda.
So, is, uh, because I know, um, and, and Mr. Hill whispered to me, perhaps the fifteenth too. So there's already five bulks, uh, Swanmore, which has been sitting, um, and so I know June first looks, well, hang, hang on now, before anyone shoots me. Um, I know June first looks, um, heavy and it is, but at the same time, you've heard testimony here, this appears to also be limited, limited testimony, if there, if you, stuff is only, I, I'll leave that to the board, um, just to, well, what's not a good idea? Well, all right, I, I'm just, because the other alternative would be for this and, 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 um, you know, I'm just hearing the applicant, there's less new information in this application than there is for, for the other one. Um, and I'm concerned we're not getting to, uh, Swanmore and that's, um, because it's affordables and stuff and we got to move, there's pressures to move that, at least start that application as well. So that's why I'm respectfully suggesting the June first meeting. Um, but again, that's the, uh, you know, that's the, that's the board's, because, uh, June first, um, and quite frankly, and I know this is not the norm as well, I would suggest for this application, they even have this one first. All right, I don't hear any, I mean, I know.
Well, uh, in my mind, what we're lacking in this application right now is, is the plans for the basement because we can digest that properly. And, and there was comment about possibly a planner. I don't know what a planner would bring to this.
I, I think there's less concern about a planner in this applica, again, it's ultimately up to the applicant. We know that you, let, let's, I guess, again, the reason I'm making this suggestion is, um, that it looks heavy, but there's really a lot of bulks on the first. The other alternative is, um, July twentieth, that I deem is a little respectfully given what he has to bring back. As long as you can get, can you get the, your information in so that the board has it ten days prior?
We can have it in by Friday.
So, but you know, I mean, we, I.
Again, my review of this, of this application, I, I'd like to have, you know, the, the basement plans and, and identification and, and discussion of that. I think the other points have been hit upon in this application, so the only bullet point remaining is the basement. So in essence, that should be short.
Basement and full architecture.
Yep, right, sorry.
Should have a couple renderings.
He doesn't have to bring the rest of the professionals then, right? Is that what you're saying?
Well.
No, 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 what we're saying, because again, that, that's my interpretation, I haven't heard of the board members. I mean, I think they, 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 they hit on Jim's concerns about the general community. There's other homes within the area of discerning, you know, there, there's no concern, I mean, to my mindset, there's no concerns with a liking kind in the neighborhood, that, that issue's been addressed. Um, uh, we've got a full explanation of, rather than tearing down, he's just modifying his home. He's, we, we know that the, really the only variance we're looking at here is the front porch. He's within his parameters, uh, in that regard, there may be some other issues I'm overlooking quickly, but again, I, I see this as, we're just going to look at the basement, we want to see the basement, we want to get our teeth into the basement.
Basement architectural is would be well served to, to do an aerial since you have the time to do that just to, to verify what you've indicated orally. Um, uh, but, you know, I don't mean to belabor it. It sounds like it, our professionals believe and listen to, to Mr. Costanza that June first would be acceptable. I would recommend for our board secretary to put them first, just to make sure, given the representations. Um, you're, now, we're going to have to make sure because I understand, uh, there's going to, one board member's not going to be available so that, uh, even though to see that Mr. Spardoff, please make sure he watches this. Uh, he's notified that to please watch the hearing, um, so he can participate. That would be the only downside, Mr. Alferi.
So with the bulk though, it's, we don't, we could go with five.
I always want seven folks, but other than that, is, is the board, is there consensus to carry us to the June first?
Yes.
So, uh, ladies and gentlemen and members of the public, application number four, Michael Rosenberg, variance, street three nine nine, has been carried to the June one, two thousand twenty two meeting without the requirement of further notice. Applicant waives time, however, through June thirty, two thousand twenty two.
That's fine, and thank you all.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.